I'll call this meeting of the Onslow County Board of Education to order. Thank you for weathering the rain and coming out, so everybody probably needs to say quack, quack, because it's been one of those days. I'd like to ask, invite Pastor Steve Allen of New River Community Church of God from Steeds Ferry to come forward. We were looking for you and we didn't see you.
I was hiding in plain sight right over there.
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming.
Would you bow your heads with me as we pray? Our Father in Heaven, we are so thankful for the privilege of being here tonight. Thank you for bringing us here safely. God, we thank you for the opportunity of education. Lord, so many nations don't have the privileges we have right here. Thank you for our educators, for our administrators. We are grateful, Lord, for the good work that's being done. We ask, Lord, for wisdom, for their leaders, for the school board, and all those, the principals, all the administrators. We ask that you would guide them, Lord, because, Father, you love the children, and we do too, and we want to do what's right for them. We ask, Lord, that you will give wisdom. Lord, there's tough decisions to be made, and we ask for your help in knowing what is the right and the best thing to do for the good of our children. I don't want to say a special prayer for our students and ask you, oh, Lord, in every way to protect them, put your arms around them, help them, Father, to learn what is good, to be able to turn away from what is evil. Lord, that you would help them to learn and to get the education that they need. I also want to pray a special prayer for our EC students. Lord, we are grateful for them, and they do have such potential, and we ask you, Lord, to bless them and their teachers as well. Father, we're grateful for our nation, and we pray for all of our leaders, and ask you, Lord, to guide them and help each one of us to do our part. Lord, that we would bring honor to your name. Help us, oh, Lord, to have a godly influence wherever we are. In the name of our Savior, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Steve. Will you rise and face the flag and join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item of business is to approve the agenda, so I'd ask for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion of...
Is there... Okay, we have a motion of second, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next are six items under the approval of the consent agenda, and you've had time to peruse those. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion of second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Before we begin the Good News Spotlight, I would like to recognize that Commissioner Tim Foster is with us this evening, and we thank you for coming. Tim is one of our principals, and we're proud that he's in both of those capacities, serving the county of Onslow, so thanks for coming. Next on the Good News Spotlight, which is where we get to highlight a lot of the very good things that are going on in our school system, and the first is the month of the military child, and I believe Ms. Brittany Norman will be coming forward on that.
Madam Chair, just want you to know, you just scared the mess out of Brittany because she thought I was going to be doing this first part, so she's like...
[laughing]
Well, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Collins, executive staff, and our audience this evening, Onslow County Schools has had a long and positive relationship with our military. The growth of Marine Corps Base Camp Lejeune, Marine Corps Air Station New River, and their associated schools and facilities has had a tremendous impact on the growth of the school system as well as the local community. As a result of the military presence in our district, OCS this year alone has been able to partner with the Department of Defense Education Activity, or DODEA, for over $1 million from the National Math and Science Initiative in support of teachers and students in advanced placement math and science courses. We currently have eight schools which have been adopted by military partners, with one in the works, and in the aftermath of Hurricane Florence, even as they were dealing with their own issues aboard base, the Marines partnered with Onslow County Schools who helped with our disaster recovery efforts. April is designated as the month of the military child, a time when we applaud our military families and their children for their daily sacrifices they make and the challenges they overcome. Schools throughout Onslow County have special events planned throughout the month to honor our military children and families. Purple symbolizes the combined colors of all branches of the military, and we encourage everyone to join us in wearing purple on Friday, April 12th, Purple Up Day, to show support for and thank our military children and their families for their strength and sacrifices. Now, tonight, we would like to kick off this month of celebrating our military connection with two very special recognitions. At this time, I'd like to invite Donna Grady, who's our USMC K-12 School Liaison for Camp Lejeune in New River, and Colonel Nicholas Davis, who is the Chief of Staff, Marine Corps Installations East, Marine Corps Base Camp Lejeune, to the podium to assist in these
Each year, Operation Home Front receives hundreds of nominations from all corners of the globe for their Military Child of the Year Award. The award recognizes seven inspiring young people between the ages of eight and 18. Six of them represent a branch of the Armed Forces, while the seventh award is for the Military Child of the Year Award for Innovation, presented by Booz Allen Hamilton. Judges look at student scholarship, volunteerism, leadership, extracurricular involvement, and other criteria, all while facing the day-to-day challenges of military family life. Nearly 400 nominees, judges narrowed it down to 90 semifinalists. We are proud to announce that two of those semifinalists are students right here in the Onslow County school system. When your name is called, we would like to ask you, your parents, and your principal to join us at the front. Elvin Katanga, 12th grader at Northside High School with Principal Lynn Jackson, and Elizabeth Kellum, 12th grader at Jacksonville High School with Assistant Principal Michelle Paget. The Frances Hesselbein Student Leadership Program was established by the Military Child Education Coalition in 2006 to identify exemplary young people through their participation in the student-to-student program. Named for Ms. Frances Hesselbein in recognition of her dedication to the development of children and youth, this biannual, one-week training program is offered at the U.S. Military Academy at West Point, New York, and the U.S. Air Force Academy in Colorado Springs, Colorado. The program delivers an intensive training, interaction with positive role models, and practical applications in which benefits participants in both their studies and throughout their lifetime. Tonight, we would like to recognize Swansboro High School 11th grader Catherine Sears for her selection to participate in the Frances Hesselbein Student Leadership Program. Catherine was one of 10 students in the spring 2019 class of the program, which met at the U.S. Air Force Academy in Colorado Springs, Colorado, from March 10th to March 15th. Although Catherine can be with us here tonight, we certainly wanted to recognize her for such an amazing accomplishment. Madam Chair, I'd like to turn the podium over to Colonel Davis.
This is really a test of my public education, I know if I know how to read, so bear with me. I already told one of the members of the board that I'm a little nervous in front of all these educators, because I was usually in the vice principal's office for mentoring. On behalf of Brigadier General Watson, Commanding General of Marine Corps Installations East at Marine Corps Base Camp Lejeune, I want to congratulate Dr. Collins on his recent promotion to Superintendent of Onslow County Schools. He's a familiar face. We know that he's already demonstrated commitment to our military children, and he was a signatory to our memorandum of agreement between the community and the military as early as 2016. So while the title is new, we know we have a strong partner in support of our military families. Moving forward, we look forward to working with you and the rest of the members. Now, as a personal note, as a father of military children, 70% of our families are outside the perimeter of the bases in eastern North Carolina. We are you, we are your community, and I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you as I deployed around the world fighting bad guys, that I had two sons that started out with Dixon Elementary, Dixon Middle School, and are now at Dixon High School. Their names will remain nameless so that they also won't go to the vice principal's office. 2018-2019 school year has been challenging with Hurricane Florence. We had our homes disrupted, our families disrupted, our schools disrupted. For almost two months, we saw our families on hold as it related to education, but yet we saw teachers go above and beyond what was required for the sake of the children. When they were not in school, they could have been home taking care of their own damaged homes. They were out in the community, they were at restaurants, they were in libraries and ballet studios, conducting classes to help keep our students on track after being disrupted for almost eight weeks. This partnership went both ways. It was our pleasure as an installation to be able to help recruit military volunteers to come into damaged schools, to help the district reopen those schools as quickly as possible, and our children are often the ones who bear the brunt of us being gone. Their families are split for multiple months, if not years, and the consequences on them to also stay focused on their education. Our families can rest easy, though, when we know that their children are being taken care of, not just academically, but socially and emotionally, by caring principals, teachers, and the staff of Onslow County schools. I'm here to let you know, we see what you're doing, we appreciate what you're doing every day on both a professional and personal level, and we're here to support wherever we can. We ask you to keep up the good work, and send them a good day.
Thank you for those kind words. Next, we will ask Brent Anderson to the podium. He's replacing Greg Grantham, who I hear is headed to the Final Four.
Yeah, he had a plane to catch, so he wasn't able to be with us this evening, so he asked if, about an hour ago, asked if I could fill in for him, so we're glad to do that. But we do have a number of our student athletes to recognize. Student athletics is a big part of what we do in Onslow County schools, it is a very visible part of what we do in the school system, being the father of children who attended Onslow County schools and one who played athletics. We appreciate what that does for our students as they go through. So, tonight, we'd like to recognize our winner athletes, and I will go ahead and let the audience know that there are a lot of certificates that are floating around, and I've given those to representatives of each of the schools, so rather than try to do the shuffle certificate and find out who's who, we're going to call the students up and recognize them, and they have the certificates from their school representatives. So we're going to begin with our Coastal 1A-2A Conference, and we're going to be recognizing first our conference players of the year and coaches of the year from the respective conferences in the sports. So we're going to begin with basketball, and we'd like to ask, and when I call your name, if you would please, come on up here at the front, and principal or representative, if you are here with them, come on up with them, we're going to take a picture, and we'll do these in groups, and then we'll get a picture of each group as we get them all through together. So with our first group, we're going to begin in basketball. We'd like to recognize Darius Thomas, who is the Boys 2A Conference Basketball Player of the Year from Southwest High School. So if they are here tonight, come on up, I know we have some that had some conflicts, but, Tim, feel free to come on up, and we'll take your picture with the rest of the group too. And we'd also like to recognize for basketball, the 2A Boys Conference Basketball Coach of the Year, Mr. Bernie Poole from Dixon High School. I know Bernie's here. Continuing with the Coastal 1A-2A Conference, and Mr. Clark, don't be shy, you can come up here too, I think that'll be all right. I think Mr. Poole will mind it if you come up too. For Track and Field, we'd like to recognize the Girls 2A Conference Track and Field Athlete of the Year, Tahalia Fairman from Southwest High School. And she is unable to attend tonight because she is at work.
She's very fast.
Tim says she is very fast, so that is a good thing. And then, we also would like to recognize our wrestling, or in wrestling, the 2A Conference Wrestler of the Year, Tyler Wargo from Richlands High School. Represented by Mr. Custy, Assistant Principal at Richlands High School. And finally, for the Coastal 1A-2A Conference in this area, we want to recognize a gentleman who is already standing up here at the front, Mr. Bernie Poole, who is the NCBCA District Two Coach of the Year for Boys Basketball. So congratulations, Poole. And that is our Coastal 1A-2A Conference, so we're going to get a picture of you guys. For Swimming, we'd like to recognize Grant Meadows from Swansboro High School as the 3A Conference Swimmer of the Year. And we'd also like to recognize from Swansboro High School in the area of swimming, Scott Evans, as the 3A Conference Swimming Coach of the Year. Coastal 3A Conference, going to move now into Cheerleading, for Keegan Jones from Waduk High School for the 3A Conference Cheerleader of the Year. And we'd also like to recognize Kimberly Hall as the 3A Conference Cheerleading Coach of the Year from Waduk High School. 3A Conference, we're going to move into Indoor Track now, and recognizing from Jacksonville High School, the Girls 3A Conference Field Athlete of the Year, Jada Hunter. Julian Stevens from Jacksonville High School as the Boys 3A Conference Indoor Field Athlete of the Year. And from Waduk High School, Chris Mueller, the Boys 3A Conference Indoor Track Coach of the Year. And we have one final recognition for the Coastal 3A Conference, it is Ms. Monique Guidry from Jacksonville High School, being recognized as the NCBCA District Two Coach of the Year for Girls Basketball. Now, from the conference recognition level, we're going to move now to some Regional Champions. We've got for Wrestling, we had three regional champions in Onslow County. Keegan Bowman from Dixon High School in the 120-pound weight class. From Southwest High School, Gal Jones in the 160-pound weight class. And also from Southwest High School, Tyler Profit in the 170-pound weight class. And Mr. Foster, I want to ask what weight class you're wrestling in.
Exceeded capacity.
Our next student athletes we'd like to recognize were state silver medalists. That means that they were state runners-up in either their weight class or their event. For Indoor Track, we'd like to recognize Tahalia Fairman for the 300-meter dash from Southwest High School. For giving Mr. Foster a workout tonight, here we go. For, from Jacksonville High School, we'd like to recognize Mallory McDonald for Girls And from Swansboro High School, we'd like to recognize Grant Meadows in the 200-meter And finally, in this category of Good News Spotlight for tonight, we have some state champions that we'd like to recognize in two different areas, indoor state track and girls wrestling, and all of these come from Jacksonville High School. So we'd like to recognize from Jacksonville High School, Jada Hunter for the Girls Triple Jump, state champion of indoor track. Also from Jacksonville High School, Julian Stevens, Boys High Jump, indoor state track And then the Boys Shot Put from Jacksonville High School, Milton Chandler. And one other state champion that we'd like to recognize, also again from Jacksonville Congratulations to all of our student athletes tonight, great accomplishments, I know that there are academic accomplishments behind those as well, especially with the disruption that we've had this year of keeping everything going with athletics and academics, trying to keep it all moving.
Did we have some people come in who were going to be recognized tonight and were late that we didn't?
Yes, come on.
Oh, she did. Yeah, come on up. And this is Elvin Katanga, and she was one of our Military Child of the Year semifinals. Colonel Davis, would you like to come up and have a picture taken? And Madam Chair, I have no doubt that Mr. Grantham would have done that a lot more eloquently than I have, but a good job all the way around for our student athletes.
Well, Mr. Foster made us laugh, that's for sure.
All right, and I'm going to stay here and do another one, so this is not a student recognition, but Madam Chair, I'd like to ask Mr. Jeff Holloman if he would come and join me at the podium at this time. Jeff Holloman, Associate Superintendent and Chief Financial Officer for Onslow County Schools, was honored on Friday, March 29th, as a 2019 Raymond Sarbaugh Leadership Award recipient at the NCASA's Annual Conference on Educational Leadership in Raleigh. This award is given annually to a member or members who have shown outstanding leadership in public school service, as well as commitment to enhancing and supporting the efforts of the association on behalf of his or her fellow school administrators. The award is named for the NCASA's first full-time and longest-serving executive director, the late Raymond Sarbaugh. NCASA Executive Director Catherine Joyce noted, quote, "Throughout his career, Jeff has been an active advocate, working to improve funding for educational opportunities for all North Carolina students, and weighing in on important regulatory and policy discussions impacting school business operations. He has taken a leadership role in interactions with the Joint Legislative Task Force on Education Finance Reform, the Governor's Commission on Access to a Sound Basic Education, a working group to make recommendations on resolving school facility funding disputes, and on several key finance and personnel issues at the Departments of Public Instruction and State Treasurer. He's also been a strong proponent of competitive compensation and benefits for teachers, administrators, and support staff, and he eagerly assisted the NCASA in their efforts to develop strategies for improving principals and assistant principals' pay. He is a leader among school leaders, and we are appreciative of his dedication and involvement." Prior to joining Onslow County Schools as CFO in 2002, Mr. Holloman worked with Moore County Schools, and Vance County Schools, in financial and business services, beginning his career in North Carolina public education in 1995. He is a graduate of the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill and is a licensed CPA. Mr. Holloman has served for several years on the Board of Directors and is a president of NCASA and the North Carolina Alliance for School Leadership Development. For nearly 20 years, he has continuously served in various officer or committee chairman positions for the North Carolina Association of School Business Officials, where he is currently serving as president. So please join me in congratulating Mr. Jeff Holloman on this outstanding honor.
Congratulations, Mr. Holloman, and I want you to know, just as a little side note, that we had never heard of the award, so we wanted to make sure it was legitimate, and we looked it up.
Madam Chair, I can vouch for, he did bring me the program from the conference.
Next, I would welcome Will Lane, the Executive Director for Secondary Education, to our podium, and he will be recognizing our 2019 NCASCD Distinguished Educator.
Good evening. Madam Chair, I'd like to ask Dr. Beth Foger to please join me at the podium. The Onslow County Schools is proud to recognize Deputy Superintendent Dr. Beth Foger on her selection to receive the 2019 North Carolina ASCD Distinguished Educator Award. Dr. Foger was officially recognized at the 2019 North Carolina ASCD Annual Conference held in Pinehurst on February 7th. The North Carolina Association of Supervision and Curriculum Development awards this honor annually to a member of the association who has made significant contributions in the areas of curriculum and instruction, as a teacher or an administrator. They measure their contributions based on innovative program initiation, improved or increased student achievement, and a demonstrated increase in efficiency and effectiveness. She will tell you that this honor is a reflection of her team and the work that they have done, which is very true. However, we all realize that leadership does truly matter. I know I'm not alone in saying that I feel very blessed to have Dr. Foger leading the academic efforts for the Onslow County schools. Please join me in congratulating Dr. Beth Foger on receiving this honor.
Congratulations, Dr. Foger. At this time, do members of the board have any items they would like to highlight as the good news? Start with you, Mr. Hudson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Unlike some other units of local government in North Carolina, once you become a member of the Board of Education, you're required to have continuing education units, and I think that's a very good practice and commended to other units of government. Recently, I had an opportunity to attend the School Board Spring Law Conference, and that's a fairly intensive two-day conference that covers personnel law. I thought it was incredibly informative, I learned about personnel law, generally fair employment practices, using reasonable care... care in hiring, criminal and other background checks, and then, of course, the standard litany of acronyms, FLSA, FMLA, ADA, all the things that, that we've been doing for many years. Also, some fairly new, new topics, such as drug testing of applicants and employees, how laws have changed regarding that, sexual harassment in the hashtag Me Too era, required reporting of criminal offenses, all of those things that are necessary when you have a, a organization as large as Onslow County Schools, 4,000-plus employees serving over 26,000, 27,000 students. Education is incredibly important. It's also a very large enterprise, and we have to keep track of all of the things that go on behind the scenes. Secondly, I was able to attend with the Chair Jacksonville Onslow's Economic Development Strategic Planning Session. And I thought it was really interesting. In fact, I stopped the presentation. I asked, "Can you repeat that, please?", much to the consternation of the other people, probably, but they, the speaker said that one of the prime site-selection criteria that business and industry looks at is the high school graduation rate, at an area they're thinking about possibly moving to or expanding into. They said that it's indicative of multiple community factors, such as quality of the workforce, crime rates, quality of life, all of the things that can be ascertained from just looking at that one indicator. And they also went on to say that Onslow County performs exceedingly well. In fact, in 2017-18, our graduation rate was 88.2% here in Onslow County that beat the state rate of 86.3%, and that's been consistently better for several years. That is due to the quality of our educators and, and the work that's going on in the Onslow County School System. I had an opportunity to, to tour Southwest High School with a gentleman we've seen a lot of tonight, Mr. Tim Foster, the principal of Southwest High School. I had previously not been able to go out there for various reasons, but basically, we, we took a look at some storm damage, the gym especially. And, and ladies and gentlemen, even though you see lots of cars in front of the schools, you know, as you pass by, I'm telling you, there is still damage in the buildings, and our students know that. They're, they're living there daily. They know the rooms and the hallways they can't go into. So we have to keep that first and foremost as we look at our, our facilities. Finally, I had a great time at Career Day at Jacksonville Commons Middle School. I appreciate the staff there that, that were showing the middle school students all the various careers that they could go into. That was a lot of fun. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of weeks ago, I had the privilege of attending the annual middle school spelling bee competition at Southwest Middle. I'm glad they were up there and not me, but, because I, I have to depend on spell check a lot, and then sometimes it's, it's wrong. But, but anyway, it was a great competition, very competitive, and as you well know, it only takes one letter to bounce you out, but the kids did a great job, and I'm not going to disclose the name of the winner, but I, we may have our first and second-place winners here the next time and give them all the attention, but it was just a great, another great event. Today was a very special day, not weather-wise, but a special day for over 2,200 4th graders in Onslow County Schools who were bussed to Quaid Oak to attend the annual performance of the North Carolina Symphony. This is a time when the symphony sort of takes the show on the road, and they perform music for the young children. They teach them how to, they play some very wonderful, wonderful repertoire, and the music teachers have been working with them the past several weeks, teaching them the instruments of the orchestra, the sections of the orchestra, the conductor, everything coming together. It's such a special day, and for many of those children, it's the very first time they've ever been exposed or had an experience of hearing and seeing a live professional orchestra. And for many and most of those children, it will be the last time they see it. But I remember when I was in the 4th grade, marching up to Granger High School in Kinston, and hearing the orchestra, it had such a big impact on my life and probably why I'm sitting here this evening. But it was such a great day, and the kids, 2,200 kids at the gym, you could hear a pin drop, because they've been trained to listen and want to listen for. It was a great day, and they couldn't have done it without the leadership of Dr. Lisa Pill. They pulled all that together and all the elementary music teachers, and yes, those student marshals at Quaid Oak High School who helped escort those kids in from the buses in a very timely and safe manner. So it was just a great day, but it's, we've been doing this for about 45 years now for our 4th graders, so that's very special. And last but not least, this, this weekend is the kickoff to our annual high school spring musicals. We start off at Richlands High School doing Fiddler on the Roof, Quaid Oak High School doing Cats, and following later on in April, Swansboro Godspell, Jacksonville Wizard of Oz, Northside Grease, Dixon Sleepy Hollow, Southwest High School Sweeney Todd. Get your tickets early, and the kids have been working very hard since January, putting a lot of time in for about a two-hour performance, and you will not be disappointed. It's just a great quality performances by our students. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Reddick?
One thing that Mr. Taylor forgot to tell you, he was out there directing traffic today in all that rain at Quaid Oak High School, so how'd it go? Did you have your vest with you?
I have, I was layered.
You were.
Umbrellas were flying all over the place, but we got the kids in as quickly as possible.
Very good. Myself, along with, I think, Mr. Taylor, Ms. Thomas, and maybe some others, were able to attend the annual Careers Day Showcase. It was held at the American Legion Building on March the 19th. About 1,900 8th graders were invited to attend this event, which is actually put on by students in the CTE classes, that's the Career and Technical Education classes throughout our, our schools here in the county. They really, what they did, it was set up in, in that large building, if you're familiar with that, with the American Legion Building, but it was set up in, in like booths, and kids manned the booth. The teachers were just there to, they just hung out. The kids manned the booths, and the booths consisted of everything from culinary arts to firefighting, business classes, welding, agriculture, carpentry, EMT. I didn't even realize we had an EMT program in the CTE world. Also automotive and collision, my wife has needed those services recently, and, and marine tech, boats and motors and that kind of thing. That's just to name a few. So this, as the 8th graders, all 1,900 of them, as they circulated, they basically asked questions. I think they had some little questionnaires and some things they had to fill out as they circulated along the, along those booths. So the purpose was awareness and really to recruit students, to let them know as, as middle school students in 8th grade, they have something to look forward to. It's not all about literature and math. It's, it's some other things that are going to be very important to them and to us. Also, Trades Day was held at Coastal Carolina Community College in, in the past two weeks. Even though I was a little bit late, I'll tell you the thing that impressed me. Coastal Carolina Community College is absolutely one of the best things in, in this community. They, along with other community members, have made this event into a really top-notch competition. It is a competition among the high school students in carpentry and electrical trades, in machinery, and, and lots of other things. I know Mr. Wiggins was there.
I wasn't.
And I know Mr. Taylor and Ms. Thomas were there, and Mr. Hudson. It's really a great day of competition, and the good news is, not only is, is Coastal Carolina a great community partner, but we also have the Onslow County Home Builders Association that takes an active part in this as far as judging and that kind of thing. The Chamber, Chamber of Commerce is a big, big player in this, in this effort, and of course, our Onslow County School System, and even the Workforce Development Board. So this is a community effort. It is not watch Onslow County perform. This is all about this community and what we do. And real quickly, Ms. Jackson is here tonight, and I was able to go over to see the Avid Recertification Ceremony today. And basically, for the next three years, Northside High School has been, I guess, accredited or certified to continue offering Avid as a big part of their program. So that was a very nice honor, and she's been through this process many times. So would you like to give us a five-minute? Probably not.
No pressure.
No pressure at all. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Lanier?
I had the pleasure of going out to Swansboro Elementary School. I was invited there for Drumming, Drumming Day. And as I was invited, I was going, gee, what is Drumming Day? And I arrived, and there's a gentleman that goes around annually throughout the district, and he does a drum presentation where all the students are involved. So from the kindergartners all the way down through the 5th graders, I started it early in the AM and ended in the PM. My hands were well worked out.[1238.65][1238.65][laughter] I got the drum for more than six hours. The students got their short stint, but my hands were working. Fortunately, I had help. Mr. Wiggins was there, and Bob Williams was there as well. But it's just one of those things where, when the teachers get the students involved in things that they, they're commonly not exposed to, it makes them enthusiastic about coming to school. In addition to that, they get exposed to things that they might not otherwise experience, and music is always a benefit. So that was a pleasure to do that that day. I was also in attendance of the Onslow County Teacher Assistance Association meeting for this month. They meet four times a year, and I must say that as a paraprofessional organization, they add so much to learning, so much support to the classroom environment, and anything we can possibly do for them, bend over backwards, jump over hoops, fly planes across the country, do whatever you can to make sure that we not only have well-trained teaching assistants, but that we have an adequate number of teaching assistants. So that should always be on the forefront of what we do. But it was a pleasure being at their meeting and, and seeing their professionalism and their concern for the students.
Mr. Wiggins?
Yes, ma'am. This is sort of highlight Mr. Taylor night, so I'll add this to it. He was talking about the spelling bee. He has trouble with that because he went to East Carolina.[1349.65][1349.65][laughter] Secondly, secondly, you know, his background as a band director and his musical talents, which are really good. After watching me work on those drums, he told me not to give up my daytime job.[1365.15][1365.15][laughter] But I, I did want to highlight the National School Board Association Conference was just held in Philadelphia, and it was a great opportunity. Myself, Mr. Reddick, and Mr. Taylor attended that, but it was a great opportunity to learn and to share with school board members from all across the United States. We had three days of educational sessions from 3, 8:30 in the morning to 5:00 PM in the afternoon. Mr. Taylor, Mr. Reddick, and myself did not, did not miss a single session. I feel it is our, our responsibility to go and to learn and to stay informed so that we can bring back ideas and policies and things that are happening all across our nation to make sure that we're taking care of our students in Onslow County. The variety of sessions dealt with many issues facing our public schools today, from graduation prep, real-life skills, to technology, to arts, school safety, school policies, student voices, things that our boards deal with every day, to nutrition, to mental health issues, to public trust, to the opioid epidemic, community partnerships, and the list went on. Very educational, very informative, and we were very involved. And I'm thankful for the opportunity to be able to go, but I want to send a message to our teachers and to our students. I think, I feel the same as these gentlemen do. I am a lifelong learner. Yes, I went to high school in Onslow County, the college, came back here and put 39 years in our school system. We're never too old to learn. A. B. For us to go and go to these classes, I hope it sends a message to our parents, to our teachers, and to our students. We're still doing what you do. We're still going to class. We're still learning, and that's our future too, to help you. Great opportunity to go.
Thank you. I'll close by just highlighting a couple of things. I'm on the NC Pre-K Board, which is a partnership between Onslow County Schools and the Partnership for Children, and it governs our preschool program, which is a blended program. It's always a pleasure to go and find out what is happening on the, on the funding front, as well as on the legalities of having those programs, so I attended that. I wanted to give a big shout-out to Dylan Destroyers, who is a student over at Carolina Forest. He and his family for years have done a large, monthly-long contest of activities that highlight fighting juvenile diabetes, and it's a program the entire school community and through the community of Carolina Forest takes place in. And I, I commend them for that. I think that in our lifetime, that may be something that we will see solved, and that's a, would be a blessing. Also, Mr. Williams and I attended the Onslow Rotary Youth Leadership Conference, which highlight, allows 100 students from Camp Lejeune, as well as Onslow County Schools, to attend a limit, a leadership seminar, and it is full of leadership activities and discussions. People get to meet students that are outside of their school. You would think at the end of the day that they'd known each other forever because of the relationships they forge during those five hours that we were there. That was really, is something that we've done for almost 25 to 30 years. I, I've tried to figure that out. Dr. Kay Gresham started that, but it's a wonderful event. Also, two events that happened yesterday or this weekend, one was the Jazz Program over at Jacksonville High School. I couldn't attend, and I know Brent, that you were probably there. I know you, it was wonderful last year. Mr. Taylor was there last year as well. Great activities for anybody who wanted to come showcasing the arts, as well as the arts and music. Then, of course, we had our student art presentation at the airport last evening, and that art will be in the lobby of the, of the airport. So if any of you are taking a trip, maybe Mr. Grantham will look at it when he comes back in from his trip. Then finally, though, I would like to highlight this because it's so important, is that Mr. Wiggins, Mr. Reddick, myself, Mr. Taylor, and Mr. Hudson, as well as members of staff, attended a renaming of the football field at Richlands High School last week, and that was named for Brock Ridge, who served on this board for 22 years and was also a lifelong teacher and then principal in Onslow County. And I, I would like you to just join me in giving a big shout-out to him with a round He was truly surprised, and it's hard to surprise people nowadays with social media, but he was surprised, and it was quite an honor for him, and I'm delighted that that was done. Well, that is the end of the Good News Spotlight, so at this time, if there are those of you who are here just for the Good News Spotlight, and you would like to make your leave, this would be a great opportunity for you to do that. We do welcome you to stay if you would like, but thank you for coming, and have a safe trip home.[1773.23][1773.23][laughter] I was looking for you, couldn't find you. Thanks for coming. I was looking for you. Couldn't find you.
He had run to the restroom.
I guess it's just you and me.
Yeah, it only was. Somebody got to take care of business.
We haven't had anyone sign up for the first public comment session, so we'll go right on into our general business. And the first general business item will be presented by Mr. Holloman, who is our chief financial officer, and also the winner of a prestigious award this evening.
The award-winning gentleman.
There wasn't a plaque with that, was there?
I believe there was.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Collins. North Carolina General Statute 115(c)(3) 66.1 authorizes local boards of education to charge tuition to students who do not reside within the school administrative district. In keeping with the board's previous actions to establish the tuition rate for out-of-county students, the calculations have been provided in your packet. The proposed tuition rate for the 2019-2020 school year is $2,115 and is presented for your consideration for approval.
Staff has presented this information. You've had a chance to review this. So if it's the pleasure of the board, someone can make a motion so that we can accept this.
Motion to approve.
We approve that.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson, seems like you should just stay up here.
I'd rather not.
But you do a wonderful job.
Well, thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that. Well, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Collins. Calendars for the 2018-19 and 2019-20 school year were presented for approval at the March 6, 2018 Regular Board of Education meeting. At that time, we were unsure when spring break for the 1920 school year would occur at Coastal Carolina Community College. Wanting to ensure that calendars were aligned between Onslow County Schools and Coastal, approval of the 1920 Early College Calendar was delayed to a later date. That got pushed back even further with Hurricane Florence, which kind of pushed some things to the back burner. But the issue around spring break has been resolved. And the attached 1920 Early College Calendar that you received has been reviewed by Onslow Early College Principal Jay Strope, and staff requests approval of the Early College School Calendar as presented.
Thank you for presenting that. Members of the board, you've seen the calendar as it's been presented in the rationale. Do you have a motion to approve it as presented?
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. We have some personnel business that we need to address. So at this time, I'd like to have a motion to go into closed session pursuant to the Open Meetings Law, for the purpose of considering the qualifications, competence, and performance of an employee or employees.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we will be returning in just a few minutes. May I have a motion to return to open session?
So moved.
Is that a second? Motion on a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Dr. Collins?
Madam Chair, members of the board, it's my distinct honor to make the recommendation under Item 5D to adopt the contracts for Chief Communication Officer Brent Anderson, Chief of Human Resource and Student Services, Dr. CJ Corinnick, as adoption, and to extend the contracts to align with the superintendent's contract. Deputy Superintendent Beth Folger, Chief Financial Officer Jeff Holloman, Chief of Operations Steve Myers, and Chief of Technology Jeff Pittman.
Thank you, Dr. Collins. At this time, may I have a motion to extend the contracts as presented?
Make the motion for extension.
Is there a second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Madam Chair, it's also my honor and request that we extend the contract of our school board attorney, Mr. Alec Irwin, to align with the superintendent's contract to end 2022.
Is it the pleasure of the board, would someone make a motion to extend the contract of the school board attorney to align with the other contract dates?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. Next, we come to the second public comment session, and we have several people who have signed up to speak. Just wanted to remind everyone that you cannot address any personnel issues directed at a particular name of anyone or things of that nature. And I have always tried to be as fair as I can, but I will stop you if I feel like you're in violation of those policies that we have established. First is Ms. Ann Hardinger.
Hello, my name is Ann Hardinger. I am the president of Onslow NCAE, which is a local affiliate of the North Carolina Association of Educators. I would like to inform you and the public of our position on the May 1st Day of Advocacy called for by NCAE. NCAE has put forth the following problems in need of immediate attention by the General Assembly. Number one, providing enough school librarians, psychologists, social workers, counselors, nurses, and other health professionals to meet the national standards. Number two, provide a $15 minimum wage for all school personnel, 5% raise for all ESPs, educational support professionals, teachers and administrators, and 5% cost of living adjustment for retirees. Number three, expand Medicaid to improve the health of our students and their families. Number four, reinstate state retiree health benefits eliminated by the General Assembly in 2017. Number five, restore advanced degree compensation stripped by the General Assembly in 2013. Onslow NCAE supports all of these reforms, and we support the May 1st Day of Advocacy. We do not, however, support the closing of Onslow County Schools. Our public schools are the cornerstones of our communities. I don't have to tell anyone here that our schools, our businesses, and our communities have barely recovered from Hurricane Florence. Our children missed almost the entire first quarter of school, and many businesses, families are just getting back on their feet. Although we do support this action, it is not prudent to close our schools at this time. Onslow NCAE, on behalf of many educators, would like to thank the board and superintendents for consideration of our concern and understanding that it is important that we send a sizable, diverse representation of educators to Raleigh on May 1st to advocate for our students and school system employees. My shirt tonight carries a very important message. "How are the children?" is a Messiah warrior traditional greeting because as the children go, so go the community. Our first action area, providing enough librarians, psychologists, social workers, counselors, nurses, and other health professionals will directly benefit every single child and every single school. Students will be able to receive counseling as it is needed. They will be able to be seen in a timely manner for the physical and mental challenges that they bring to school. Additional counselors and social workers will aid in the prevention of bullying, and it is a fundamental step in defending our children against school violence. Currently, many of these duties fall on classroom teachers and become a distraction from the primary duty of teaching the children. Providing raises for all educators, reinstating compensation for advanced degrees and retirement benefits will help us fill our classrooms with highly qualified, effective teachers. Our students deserve better than to be taught for a full year by a series of long-term substitutes, simply because we cannot find teachers to put into the classroom. Teachers are leaving the profession or leaving the state in droves. We must act now to repair this leak of talent. Our students cannot wait until 2030. Finally, we encourage all who are able to join us in Raleigh on May 1st as we speak for changes that will build strong students, strong schools, and strong communities. We have created a flip grid. A flip grid is very easy to use. My second graders love it, where you can go to give your thoughts and concerns or a message of encouragement to the educators of Onslow County. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mrs. Laura Prince.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for the opportunity to address this group. My name is Laura Prince. Throughout my life, I have served in many career capacities, including cafe dishwasher and corporate CFO. But tonight, I speak to you as a retired educator, and it is on that crucial word educator, as well as upcoming activities on May 1st, that I wish to focus my remarks. So often, we hear through various media and conversation that teachers are doing this or teachers are doing that, sometimes positive actions nurturing our children, teaching the state-approved curriculum using their own funds to assure that all our children are able to participate fully in activities without impediment, whether financial or otherwise. Other times, we hear negative remarks about teachers. Earlier today, in a conversation with a friend of mine, who is in fact a retired educator, I referred to the May 16th event in Raleigh, to which she replied, "Oh, the teacher walkout." I knew her words were not intended to be taken literally, and yet someone less well-versed in that activity could very well deduce that. Regarding last May 16th, it was never my or my local colleagues' intention to shut down Onslow County Schools on May 16th, 2018. However, the rally and demonstration was a success for everyone in North Carolina as it brought great attention in areas of need that needed attention. We all appreciate the support of this community and the board in that success. We have learned from last May 16th and its positive results. And so now this year's May 1st rally, we have the luxury of time for planning. It is my sincere desire that all stakeholders work together to make this a positive, productive day for educators and friends of educators participating in Raleigh and remotely for our communities, and most of all, for our students and schools in a regular, productive instructional day. Our motto states, "Strong students, strong schools, and strong communities." And that's what May 1st is all about. Now, getting back to that word educators, how many of us truly realize the number and varied types of positions that exist to help our children learn? In addition to teachers, we have maintenance, custodians, teaching assistants, which was mentioned earlier by Mr. Lanier. We have personal assistants for students with very specific, special needs. We have librarians, nurses, administrators, clerical workers, counselors, nutritionists, cafeteria workers, speech therapists, many more, and we also have bus drivers. How can our children all get a sound education if they're not in school? And so many of our bus drivers are providing that transportation for our children. They get up in the dark, they get their buses ready, they warn them up, they pick up the children and get them safely to school. On occasion, they may have to have a field trip. They may have other duties at school during the day or elsewhere. But by and large, bus drivers are gone, and they're off the clock. Bus drivers are gone, and they're off the clock. They're not being paid during most of the day. Then they come back and take our children home. It seems we're always in need of bus drivers, and how can that be when this is such an important job? One reason just might be the compensation. Recently, legislation was enacted that every worker in the state of North Carolina would receive a minimum wage of $15 per hour. Every employee in the state, except those in education. Once again, our legislature has shown a lack of respect for many of those who care for our children and nurture our precious resource. I have to stop there for a moment. That really stymies me, how that could be. And this is one of the platforms for our May 1st demonstration. My child is no longer in school here in Onslow County, but she did ride a bus. And she went here from kindergarten to 12th grade. So she's grown, she's out of the public school system. So does that mean I have no concern? Absolutely not. Because we are all responsible for all of our public school children, our future contributing citizens, and an appropriate education for them. We must focus on the best possible education. Indeed, to adapt an Arthur Miller title, they are all our children. And it really does take a village to accomplish that daunting task. To the end of building strong students, strong schools, and strong communities, I thank this board and administration for their support of all our educators in sending a representative delegation to participate in the May 1st event in Raleigh. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Escobar Morales. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes, ma'am, you did.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. So thank you once again for giving me the opportunity to speak here. My name is Escobar Morales, and I am here with members of the Northside High School Band Program. And what we are here to establish is that we are very concerned for our current band director that we have. There is a lot of speculation going around the school, going outside the school system, that we are going to receive a new director once again. Now, the current director we have has not only been very supportive of students like myself and these band parents and other students that are here by me. She has also shown good care for instruments, shown good care for the program. And as a senior, I have gone through three to four different band directors. And it's very stressful because in order to build a band program, you need to have consistency. You need to make sure that everything is on board so that way we build a stronger bond, a stronger love for the students and the power of music. We don't just see music as a normal class day. We see it as a form of bonding. We see it as a form of building stuff together. That's why there's important pieces, there's important elements of music that combine us to who we are today. What's also important is that if we do get a new director, this not only changes the level of the student's motivation, it also stresses out the parents due to the lack of fundraising because there's also more... the lack of fundraising, because there's also more, okay, I need to listen to this person now. Wait, we did it like this last year. Like, we have had like a lot of change, and the issue is that like with it being changed, it resets everything. I'm just saying, if it's not broke, then don't fix it. And what we need to focus on is the matter of consistency, the matter of making sure that we're there for each other, and that's what builds a bond between not only a teacher and the students, but also teachers and ensembles and much more, so that way, we all know how to do and work together. What's also very important is that we, not only as students, not only as parents, supporting members, like, we come here to address because we're worried. It's to the point where we're like, we're questioning the administration, why are we having the change in our directors? Why is our music changing? Why is, we're having a lot of change? And I personally believe that like, as I said before, as a senior right now, who has gone through different directors, I have gone through different changes in programming. I've gone through different changes of how teachers want to teach their elements of music. And it's, it very like, it makes me concerned for some of the students, because they're like, I don't know who to listen to, I don't know who to follow. And which is why the current director that we have right now, this director we have, we are truly blessed to have, because this director has not only shown compassion for like instrumental care, for raising programs, taking care of concerts, it's also helped us out personally, like for people who like, who struggle at home, for people who are like, who have been through a lot, because not everybody's perfect. And this director that we have has shown that like, you can struggle, you can hustle and everything, but still come into your job and do the one best thing, and that's make music and make a bond with everybody, and you can't take that away from anybody. What's also like, we are all here, is that we want to, we're concerned, but also, we want to make a legacy and change something. We want to make sure that the Northside Band Program continues to escalate, not fall back, because like with different resetment, we just, it's just gone downhill, which is why like this current director we're blessed to have, we are thankful for. And before I conclude my final statement, I just want to say that we are all here. I thank the Northside Band students that did come out. We are here because we want to announce that we appreciate the director we have. We encourage you and highly would like for you all to like take our statement, take our opinion, because we, we are the future of this generation. Like sooner, like 20 to 30 years from now, we could be doing what you guys are doing right now by observing us. And what I think is important is that like, in order for us to make history, in order for us to establish something, we must follow the format of consistency. And if we have this director that we currently have, not only this is bringing consistency for musicians like myself, for musicians that are freshmen, sophomores, and juniors that will learn to love and appreciate music, this builds more like love and creation for the arts program. Because like for us, we don't consider music as like an activity, it's a form of like, it's what makes us, it's what makes everybody, and it what makes everybody so special, so unique, which gives us the passion to work. And I guess with only 12 seconds left, I would just like to say, we, I appreciate you all listening to me, we highly recommend you listen to us, and we want y'all to know that hopes and dreams can save the world as long as the music industry. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'd like for you to hold your applause, please. Next is Mrs. Faith, I don't know how to pronounce your last name, a parent?
Watress.
Watress. That's exactly what I was going to say.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, thank you for the opportunity to address concerns regarding the Northside High School band programs. My name is Faith Watress, and I am here representing some of the parents of the band. My family and I have been active in these programs for four years now. Throughout this time, the program has faced many transitions and challenges, and the effects on both the programs and the students is very evident. When my senior first started the programs, her freshman year, there were several policies in place that provided some structure to the program and expectations for student participation. Despite the ongoing challenges with student behavior, the programs had achieved some success. After a transition in directorial leadership the summer before the 2016-2017 school year, the programs experienced an increase in challenges that were clearly evident in student behaviors. The conflict and discord between students permeated the program, particularly during the marching band season, with many talented and dedicated students questioning their participation in the program. The marching bands programs achievements were clearly impacted by the discontent among the students, with the 2016-2017 competition year reflecting the attainment of the lowest scores and the least amount of awards in my time in the program. After the students were told during the spring of 2018 that there would be yet another transition in directorial leadership, many were apprehensive but hopeful for the future of the program. The students were specifically told that this transition would be a positive one, and that the future of the program was assured. Transitions are always difficult, and the 2018-2019 school year's seniors are having to experience two within three years. There are many difficulties, in addition to the transition and directorial leadership, that all the students have had to face this year with the impact of Hurricane Florence. Yet despite these challenges, the program has made notable improvements. The structure and direction that is now provided to the students has supported growth. Among the most notable accolades is that the students were able to learn and perform with high levels of success a four-movement marching band show despite the significant amount of school days missed during, due to the hurricane. Not only did the students earn several awards at competitions that were directly related to their performance on the competition field, the marching band as a whole also earned both the Pride Award at the White Oak Band Classic and the Spirit Award at the West Craven Band Classic. Both of these awards are presented to only one out of all of the bands competing at each competition, and is in recognition of their behavior and performance off the competition field. These awards represent achievements not earned in previous years, and is a direct reflection of the directorial leadership and students' current pride in their marching band program. Time does not allow me to note all the significant gains the band programs have achieved this school year, but I feel that it is vital to note that the future success of these programs requires administrative support in assuring that there is consistent directorial leadership for these programs. The individuals most impacted by these arbitrary changes are the students. Music programs not only support their academic achievements, but are also a vital outlet for expression. They need a safe environment with a teacher who has a passion for them that is only equaled by her passion for music. The Northside High School band programs currently has a teacher that fits that profile. I only hope that these programs receive the support necessary to continue to guide the students in their personal growth and to grow these programs as a whole to reach their fullest potential. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Mrs. Angela Allen.
I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. My name is Angela Allen, and I'm representing the Northside High School Marching Monarch Band Boosters. And I just want to say, I have a shirt at home. This is not my first time in the band program at Northside High School. I have two children that have graduated from Northside. I have a freshman at Northside who's currently in the band program, and I have a shirt at home that I was just looking at today before I went to work, and it said, "Challenge Accepted." And the students at Northside know what that means. We take pride in what we do, and as a band booster, we've faced many challenges this year, not only with the hurricane, but we had a transition in leadership. And if I could take three things away from the music program here at Northside just this year, I'll give you three things. The first thing is structure. Structure has been brought to the program. The children know what is expected of them in the classroom and outside of the classroom. You represent Northside High School wherever you go, whether it's at Northside, Jacksonville, anywhere in Onslow County, we're proud to be a marching monarch. Number two, accountability. You have to know your music. You have to know your moves. It's part of being in the band. And the students this year have been accountable for their actions, they've been accountable to the teachers, not only to the band teachers, but to the teachers that represent Northside High School. And lastly, discipline. Not to toot our own horn, but toot, 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 this year, these kids went out on these competitions, and they, I've been in the band program since 2012, we've been recognized because of our behavior. Who does that? We got recognized, not only because our children, not only did they walk in them fields with their heads held high, because they was proud to be a marching monarch, but they had the leadership who never allowed them to think differently. No, Northside High School is not as big as White Oak. We, you know, our numbers may have dwindled a little bit in previous years. I remember when the band was over 120-something kids strong. Yes, our numbers have dwindled, but the kids that are left in this program speak volumes. Not only do the children speak volumes, but the leadership of these children speak volumes. So in closing, I'm a Christian woman, so it would be relevant for me to bring scripture into this, but the Bible talks about, "Without vision, the people perish." The Northside High School band program now has a vision, and it would be foolish to kill that vision prematurely. The band moms, we have a little joke, and we say, "My money is on the field. My money is at Northside High School. I'm a proud band booster. I'm a proud marching monarch." When I walk in Walmart and I walk into these stores, yes, my baby is on the front ensemble of the Northside High School marching band, and it's because of the leadership that is in place today. I've never heard the leadership raise her voice, I've never heard her disrespect these children, and in turn, guess what we got? We got respectful children. I don't typically speak at functions like this, I'm a little nervous, but today, I felt like, if I didn't, then that means I would be okay with what's going on, and I'm not. So, thank you for this opportunity to speak. My money is on the field, go Monarchs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Marcy Warford.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Superintendent Collins, and executive staff, administrative staff, and public, who are here because we all care about education. And I'm here because I support our teachers voicing their concerns in Raleigh. As we've heard earlier, we're not, our schools will not be closing, we'll just have some teachers representing a voice in Raleigh. Why Raleigh? Well, because we know in Onslow County that we value education, and in the past several years, Raleigh has made several cuts to our teachers' assistance, to longevity pay for teachers, master's level pay for teachers, and the state of North Carolina, we all love it, it remains below average for how we fund public education. So I think that all of the residents of Onslow County should be grateful for the teachers speaking in Raleigh, for all of our students and our community. If North Carolina fully funds public education, then maybe Onslow County doesn't have to pick up the rest of the tab for the funds that are not paid through Raleigh. So just a thought for residents of Onslow County to think of, and maybe join the teachers in Raleigh to speak for our students. Teachers are natural advocates for our students, they are lifelong servants, they lead lives of service, and so I hope everyone in Onslow County will support the teachers having a voice in Raleigh. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank all of you who have come to speak tonight, we appreciate that. At this time, that conducts the business of the Board, so I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Have a good evening, this meeting is adjourned.